We can call the hearing to order here. The first meeting, 7:15. 13 Middle Street, request for a variance from provisions of 3.1 of the zoning bylaw. It's agricultural residential lot, assessment map 5C lot 8. Kipper Realty for Barbara Palangi. Applicant seeks formal recognition that three dwelling units exist on the property. No changes are proposed to structures or the floor plan.
Okay, thank you very much Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you again. Tom Reedy, Attorney General, Baker Wilson, over in Amherst here on behalf of the property owner. And I think just as the Chair noted, it's a pretty simple request. Just really looking to formalize, there are three units, three separate tenants inside the building. Nothing is proposed to change for a floor plan or the exterior. I think they're gonna add an egress door. I think one of the units needs an egress door. But that's it. Otherwise, if you've been buying, it's a big old farmhouse, I think from the 1800s. So we think it's good to provide, like I said, there's our three tenants in there. They've been in there for pick a number of years. I think back to at least the 70s and not the same tenants though, to be clear. But the units have been occupied and they've been three units since that time. You know, without any outdoor expansion, it's good for infill development. And I think just going to the three units really just to formalize it makes a lot of sense in this circumstance. So if the board were to find, you think you can make the finding without derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw? If you were not to grant it, then the applicant would have to go through significant expense in removing a unit. And that's really what we're talking about with no outdoor changes and good for infill. So I'm happy to answer questions, but it's one of those formalization things.
Does anyone have any questions?
Is this under new ownership?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. So this is for the prospective owner or the current?
I think it's a little bit of both.
I'm the current owner. Barbara Palangi, David and I own that house. And I'd like it to pass this year because of financial reasons for myself and for health reasons. I have to move closer to my family, which are in the Boston area, and that'll make it more sure of Massachusetts.
So it's under contract to be sold and if this passes then prior to the end of the year, the transfer of the house. But it's something, you know, if variance is granted, it's something that will stick with the property. So that's why I say it's for the current.
How long have you been in the property?
Me?
Yeah.
We bought the properties back in 1992 or 1993 because my mother passed away in 1992. And my brother was diagnosed with polycystic cancer disease and I wanted to analysis. So we bought our property in...
93.
93, okay, 93, yeah.
And there was three units there when you bought it?
Yes, it was. And you know what I think? I think that unit in the back, that's a little small unit. It's, the house is from like 1812 or 1818?
1800s, right?
1800s, yes. I think that might have been either like a tavern or it might have been even in a slave quarters. I don't know why that unit is back there. But I mean, we certainly didn't do anything and this goes back to what, 1972?
It goes back to 1972, yeah, your ownership is 19, looks like, 1990.
So it was a back address estate that we bought. There's like five houses, 23 North Lane and La Quanta House, whatever.
Those Middle Street properties?
No, the Middle Street.
Terminal 13.
And the one that Jackie owns, not too, yeah.
When you talk about the third, the back unit, you're talking about the third unit? You're saying that was listed all along?
Since we bought it, yes, 1993.
And the rear unit is like a one bedroom, one bathroom?
One bedroom, one bathroom.
And the front ones are two bedroom, two bedroom, one bathroom? Those are the two front ones.
There's a front and there's a middle. So there's a front apartment, a middle apartment and a back apartment.
Is the house currently listed as a two family?
We bought it as a multi, just a multi-family. We bought it through Town and Country, I can't talk about this, Town and Country through Jackie Sussko's work in there at the time. So I think she was our real estate, yeah, she was our real estate agent.
But you don't need a special permit for the two family, sorry, you two family?
And that's why we need the variance to go to a three family. Or to formalize the three family.
What, there's a, I think, so I don't, it's kind of a little bit outside of our purview, but there's some amount of time, I think it might be 10 years, but that they can't even look back on something like this?
Yeah, and so that's, I think, 48, section 7 provides some grandfathering protection if structures have existed for a certain period of time. I don't know that it extends to use of the structures. So like, let's say you were to go and build a house in the woods and nobody knew about it, but you could prove it's been there for 10 years. So the Commissioner can come and say, "Take that down." So it's like one of those things. So I don't think this falls into that category. So that's why we talked to Dee Dee and Tom Quinn when this was the path that they had suggested.
You know, I think we can consider giving the variance. I don't know, so the variance would have to be contingent on, I don't know if any rules change when you go from a two family to a three family. So it'll be contingent on the building code, they have to figure out for town, I think we're just being asked to recognize whether we can recognize the existence of it and it's a variance because it's currently only a two family and there's no mechanism for registering it as a three family.
I don't understand how, excuse me, can I just interrupt you? I don't understand how we could buy it as a multi-unit, the three units, and it was considered a two family now. I know the zoning laws change all the time, but I mean...
So what we're trying to do is to formalize it as that three family because really one of the issues would be if he bought it as a three family and then...
Oh, okay.
Then the Philly Commissioner comes and says, "Get one of these tenants out of here." And the issue would be that you'd have to try to predict a tenant who says, "Well, I have a lawful lease to this property."
The law, tenant, and law is very much...
But we're just trying to formalize it as three.
Yeah, so it's not an issue of it changing. It's an issue, so somebody should have caught it somewhere along the line, especially when the property is changing hands, usually, like it is right now, it's coming up. So it fell through the cracks, you know, sometime in the 70s, it sounds like. And you know, I certainly think it would be a hardship to try to enforce it on the current owner who has done nothing wrong. You know, we see this thing kind of outside with these old houses, older houses that have stayed in championship a long time. I don't have any issue with it. Like I said, I just think we should note that the variance will be contingent on anything that Tommy says, which might be an issue for the next owner. But in order to make the different things with running a three family and running a two family, I felt, you know, just like that.
The variance can't be conditioned though on zoning ownership, so...
Oh, no, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying...
I'm just saying that the owner may need to realize when he's dealing, that zoning code is different than building codes.
So we can recognize that there's three units there, but if, I'm not saying this is the case, but if Tom says you need to put an egress in the back or a fire escape or whatever, I don't know what he did, but we can, that's not before us. You know, noting that, but if there's any other requirements in, I'm thinking in particular about the building department, but if there's any for other departments, we're not speaking to that, we're just speaking to the variance.
It's certainly gonna be a hardship.
Well, it's gonna be a hardship for me because it doesn't pass this year. Next year, I'm gonna have to pay double in capital gains, to be honest with you. And that's gonna hurt me because I want to move closer to family because I'm not failing wrong. I had back surgery last year and I can't say I'm going to that. But you'll say it affected something, I'm gonna go out here, so I'm still working at it. My doctors are at the Mass General, so I have to move closer to family. And Tommy doing some of it later.
I think also we can note that, I think it's, there's other multi-family homes in that area. It's not like out of step with the other uses that are taking place in that area.
I would purchase as a multi-family.
That's all, that was multi-family online, yeah. I didn't say this is a three unit, this is a two family, now it's multi-family, they're all just multi-families.
We haven't heard from any neighbors, I don't think I've seen anything here from any neighbors. Any one have any questions? I'll make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to grant a variance from provision of 3.1 of the zoning bylaw. Assessors map 5C, lot 8, for Barbara Palangi. For formal recognition that three dwelling units exist on the current property. No changes are proposed to the structure.
Second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Good seeing everyone in person.
Thank you so much. You don't know how much this makes, right?
Well, good luck with everything.
Good to see you. Did you get that thing in the, is it over there? Is it very good, yeah? Nice to be nice to see you.
See you, it's a big seven happy.
I tried to soften them off, I don't know, it's gonna work.
See what's he had that, let's see what that was.
Good luck to you.
And thank you.
Have a good night.
Try to donate to Toys R Us.
Barbara wants a top, take a chair.
I want to pay 728. We just gave him that front door a little bit?
Yeah, that door was still.
All right, I have 730. So we'll call the second hearing. This is the 13 Russell Street, request for a variance, commercial redevelopment of section 5.1.7 and 29 of the Hattie zoning bylaws, business zone, assessors map 04C parcel 0023, By Triangle Properties LLC. Applicant proposes redevelopment from gas station to coffee shop, pre-existing non-conforming lot. Structure will fit in the original footprint. Variance is needed for an external stair and deck.
Great, thank you. The record just wire, the commercial design group here on behalf of Triangle Properties LLC. So everybody is familiar with the property, obviously. This is the one at the corner of Bay Road and Russell Street. For the record, as you noted, it was parcel 4C, number 23. 13 Russell Street is the address. Former Getty, the service station, the desk and office space was in this one-story structure here. There's a larger canopy that still remains on the parcel right now, that sits further up to the west. You can see the way the property line sits, it's kind of goofy that it jogs in off of Bay Road, several feet. So it decreases the lot size. So the two non-conformities that currently exist are, the lot is currently just over 12,000 square feet. There's a 30,000 square foot minimum in this district. That lot size is not changing. The other, other change or request is, so the proposal is to redevelop the site into a drive-through coffee shop. There's a whole lot of, nothing we can do with that building, it's about 700 square feet. Actually, I'm sorry, it's about 500 square feet. So one of the, one of the things that they're looking to do is add a second story storage space above that first floor. And in order to get there, they need exterior staircase that, stairway that provides access to that second floor because there doesn't need a room on the interior. And so the setbacks on the site, as they sit now, so for the building part, it's a 50-foot front setback because it's considered a corner lot. There's a 40-foot setback in the back that leaves two tenths of a square foot of buildable area, you know, right there. This is where the building sits. The goal is to put the stairway here. I did mention the deck, it does conform with the rear setback and it is no more non-conforming than the existing front setback along this edge, if you will. The one encroachment is that stairwell, is that staircase, which is needed for egress to the second floor.
In which direction would people be going down that staircase, going down?
It is just for, it's just for employees, it's...
Where is it, where would people be exiting?
Oh, they're exiting here.
So they're gonna be exiting in front of traffic?
They, well, there's a landing at the base of the stairs and there's a clear, you know, there's a clear line of sight as they come down the stairs, you know, around, it's around this corner. It's not like, it's not gonna be hidden, they're out here a little, they're out here further where they come down.
The staircase is used just for employees?
Just for employees, right, just storage, yeah.
If they are gonna be coming down here...
They can come down, come down and...
But in front of cars coming through?
There's cars driving through here, yes, but again, there's landing, they can see, you know, it's not like they're walking out into a blind, you know, blind corner with high volume of traffic. This is, they're gonna be restocking, you know, during off hours or, you know, in the business.
They're not going around to the back, they're going around to the...
Is the deck for, is the deck for customers?
The deck is for customers, yes, yes. And so we've still gotta go, so procedurally, we've got a permit into, we've got a notice of inten in the conservation commission because it's all in floodplain, none of that is changing. We're actually creating some rain gardens and additional storage, it's not your business. We do have a permit application in front of the planning board. And we were close to being finished until all of this suddenness popped up and for whatever reason it never, it never crossed anybody's mind that this creates something non-conforming site, but of course it is.
So the deck, the deck reaches, the deck is actually conforming. I don't, I actually don't really mean a variance for the deck.
I mean, the only reason it's non is because the building inspector said that this is the front setback, that there's a 50-foot front setback along both property lines there.
So it means this...
So, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean the front.
And that's the deck on...
And that's just the deck, right. Yep. But they're, yeah, obviously they're just trying to squeak anything they can out of this just to make the bylaw this property because it's not gonna...
So certainly, one of the variance categories we can take into account is odd shapes and topography of properties. Pretty odd shaped piece of property there.
Yeah. And the canopy is coming down just for, you know...
It's gonna make the site, isn't it?
Yeah.
Just, for some reason, I don't know why, but I thought that the stairway was underneath part of the deck structure. But the deck was gonna be upper level and the stairway below it. That's not the caves.
No, the, let's see, drive-in.
So we have two pieces being added to that.
So this may give you a better idea. So these are architectural elevations that we're sitting in the planning board. This is, so this is the, what, east or west elevation? So it means a drive-through and this is the staircase off to the side. Provide access to the second floor. And so it comes down, right.
Is there any kind of barrier there for, I mean, I'm...
There's a curb.
It just seems, well, I'm concerned about people stopping in front of cars, though.
Like that on the side.
But there's a sidewalk for it.
There's a sidewalk and obviously, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't know if there'll be more than one employee, to be honest, maybe two, but you know, as folks are coming through, certainly there's gotta be...
Is there a sidewalk here?
There's a sidewalk across the deck, other than all the stairs to the back, we can see them, it's here. This is all hatched, that's the connection to a, yeah.
That's the sidewalk, the hatch?
That's, that's all hatched.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, right. I mean, it's a thing that that's gonna get a lot of use, really, I mean, this is a drive-through, so we need to write something.
But to your concern, that is, that is a pedestrian hatched crossing.
Beams, right, right. And I know, you know, I don't know what the exact signage will be, but there definitely needs some signage on the building face that, you know, is a warning.
Yeah, because just to have people dumping right down, so that would be very unsafe.
So this, this pink line here is the, that's the 50-foot setback?
This is, this is the rear setback. This, this is the 50-foot from Russell Street, this is the 50-foot from Bay Road. So there's two tenths of a square foot.
That's crazy, yeah.
I'm happy to see that the two entry, the entrance and exit are on Bay Road.
Bay Road being blocked off, yes.
Yeah, okay. Are the restrooms in this room?
Uh, no, only for, only for staff.
And the deck is there, so it meets the back and outside.
This is, this is Route 9, yeah?
This is Route 9 here, this is Bay Road, right.
So you have no, no curb cut off of Route 9?
No, no, but the two, the two issues, the biggest issues is our circulation. Is that you couldn't, there was no way to get cars in and around, to get the stacking that seemed to satisfy the planning board and...
Planning board didn't want a curb cut on...
And, you know, understandably, it's, you know...
The deck would be low.
Yeah. So we'll...
So is the deck, I mean, the stairwell?
How do you access the deck?
So this is all at grade. This, you know, this comes up, there's a path in the back.
So it is hatched, that's why I wondered where it was.
Right, this, yeah, this is a little path section, this is, this is...
So the deck is for the use of...
Customers, it could be staff as well, but you know, maybe with just some way to offer some type of...
I think there's probably six parking spaces there.
And actually, these two are intended to be employees.
That's a drive-through coffee shop, so it's like, you can't go inside to get a coffee.
We don't have to deal with the coffee shop part, we just have to deal with the structure.
That's the one inside.
I think it's a drive-through, counter space, yeah.
There's no restrooms for customers?
Yep.
They have, well, we don't have to worry about food. Everybody's at the deck with tables serving any kind of food with coffee.
We take out, you know, there's no kitchen there. It'll just be grab and dough kind of stuff.
We only have to worry about the stairwell.
And that, right, these two are the, right.
So what's, what's, what is the setback on the stairwell?
Um, it is, that's a very good question, I should have answered you right off the top of my head.
Was that a scale?
Say it's 20 feet. Yeah, I'd say it's about 20 feet.
It needs to be 50, is that the...
It needs to be 50, right?
But it's kind of funky because it's a corner lot, so he has two front setbacks because of the way it's a corner. So it's really more almost like a side, that's actually, which is 15, right?
Yes.
15, yeah.
It looks far enough back.
I know, that's what I was trying to, but I hear you saying where all those things intersect is one place you could build.
Right, it's only about 15, 14 feet, the corner. So this corner to the right, it'll end about 15, 14 feet.
And that's where the odd, gigantic amount of stuff is?
It's, well, it's just because this, there's a 50-foot, you know, 50-foot setback from Bay Road property line. That's the other issue is that, you know, this property line starts in about, you know, 15, 15 feet from what the other property lines are.
That's just from the running way.
I think it was when the, yeah, when this all got, all happened, I'm not sure what was the, so the lots a little bit smaller to begin with and then, yes.
All right, so it's, so it's 14 feet of setback from Bay Road.
From Bay Road, right.
And then how, and then...
And Russell Street doesn't change, I believe that's 30, was it 32?
And then how would the deck, how far is the deck set?
The deck is set, in the back is 41 feet.
But the deck is also too close to...
It's as much as the existing building, I mean, the closest the deck is, let's see.
So the deck is fine in the back, but it's too close to Bay Road?
It's too close to Bay Road, right? It's no more non-conforming, you need this structure.
So you're framing the deck to be parallel with the...
With the structure, right, with the building.
And the offset property line there too, so you're not approaching...
Right, it gets further away as you go west.
It's a lot of working on a very small, crazy lot.
Yeah, a little bit of testing.
So how far is this from the property lines of the deck?
Uh, the property line to the deck is, let's say, 20, 23 feet?
It's closest.
Now, is that the back or is it the...
The 21 feet is here, that's the side, the back is 21, is 41 feet.
It's largely, I mean, I think this is like largely a planning board issue, how they're gonna fit this business on there. But in terms of like what the business is, like I think a employee staircase in that location is, I mean, I don't see a problem with that. And then like you said, the deck in the back is, I don't know, I think it's a close call, but this could be a finding, but he asked for variance, you know, we're here, but the deck in the back is not even really more detrimental, right? But I guess technically both too close to the road, so that's why we're thinking of variance. I just, I don't see, I mean, it's such an odd shaped, such an odd shaped lot and...
It looks like you've done as much with the topography as you possibly can.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are limited, obviously, in the back there because that, everything, everything behind the building is in lower elevation, which is in floodplain, we can't, we can't move into that down there, so...
So we got shape, probably topography and soil conditions, which are all variance.
You have to mention harsher, you could try to...
And the harsher.
We haven't done much, yeah.
So... I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, they're pretty tight in there, not much they can do.
It's gonna be nicer than that, the funky acid, you know?
Right.
Certainly not, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I know that we grant the request for variance, section 10, commercial redevelopment and according to 5.17, 29 of the Hattie zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes redevelopment from gas station to coffee shop and the variance is granted for the external stair and deck.
So that's 14 feet for the stairs and 21. So that's fourteen feet for the stairs and twenty-four feet for the, for the deck.
Yep.
From Bay Road. All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, he said.
Yeah, he said. You and I.
I, yes, I, sorry.
All right, variance granted.
Good luck, guys. Yeah, appreciate it. Hopefully they follow through and, and the site looks a lot better. I guess the other, I guess the other permits are first order.
Right.
I'm not sure how you manage it.
Well, this is the first stop, so that's.
Okay, seven forty-five, we had some.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had some other general business. Um, review and approval of the previous minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Linda, any, any questions on those?
I do have one correction in the board meeting minutes. Says at the bottom of the minutes, hearing closed and it wasn't a hearing, it was a meeting. So it should say meeting closed. That's the only correction I have.
Uh, so can, do we have a motion to accept the minutes from the September twenty-eighth hearing?
Aye, move.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Minutes that are accepted? All right, then we have a couple of things, uh, I'm going to take them a little bit out of order. Um, we, we do have a request for an extension of time for the Most Holy Redeemer variance that we granted. Um, we got a letter from the Most Holy Redeemer Building Committee. And basically, we had granted, let me see here. We granted a variance to Most Holy Redeemer for the construction of that clock tower. I don't know if you guys remember that, it's going to be on that, um, there's a little like rotary, it has a front of the church.
Yeah, it's like, it's between the middle of the rotary.
So they wanted to put it there and that's a, is a setback variance, I believe it's too close to the road. But there's no, you know, sight lines impacted because it's going to be like a, like a tripod.
Did we grant that?
We did grant that.
We did, yes.
And there's been a holdup in getting the, the funding and the, all the paperwork with the, um, diocese. So they have not started construction yet and they're asking for a, an extension. We just see if they can get the letter.
Most of them get it in six months.
Yeah.
And that would take them into August. Because of.
Is, are we coming up on a year from when we granted that? Yeah, so he's asking for an extension to August of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we've done these in the past, I mean, we did them for, uh, the, uh. Solar, that one is the last one I remember, it's just, if they've gone this way through, like a letter request, I mean, does anyone have any issues with that?
No.
No.
Okay, so.
It's within the time limits.
So we will, um. I don't, I don't know if we have to do a motion, I didn't vote on that, but we.
Probably should have just in case.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to grant the time extension for Most Holy Redeemer, um, variance. Uh, six months to August, Linda, you said it was?
Yes, I think it's August twenty-seventh, but it, end of August is probably fine.
Okay.
A second on that?
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let them know on that. We, I just had a note in here about the upcoming friendly forty B, so I spoke with town council on that and just, you know, without talking about the specific case. Um, just to bring you guys up to speed on kind of what the process is going to be for that. So that is, um, that's going to be coming before, so they have not submitted a formal application. But the selectmen have issued a, um, a letter of interest or something to that effect, which, you know, lets, lets them know that, that leadership in town is supporting the project. Um, or of the project being heard, I guess. And so that, so they will become, they will be filing a, um, an application with us. What, we are above the ten percent, so what happens is we will notify them that we're above the ten percent and we will open the hearing with, um. The ability to deny the motion if we want to. Um, and so then we will bring in, we will be, we will, we will be working with town council and with a consultant. To like work through the things, because we're going to be handling like the stuff that the planning board typically be handling in terms of like parking and drainage and all that stuff. We, we refer it out to the other boards and the other boards give us feedback. Um, and we have up to six months to get done the hearing. Um, but so that will be coming before us. I mean, if we, if we vote, well, I guess we don't, we don't have to vote to accept that anyway, because the, you're, you can open the hearing as long as you give them the notification about the ten percent. You can open the hearing with the opportunity to, um, to deny it later on. So I think that, I mean, I don't see why we wouldn't do that. Um. But that is sort of the process on that, just wanted to let you guys know that if that's going to be coming, it's going to be like a more intensive thing than what we normally do.
Mm-hmm.
Along, along the process, things could come up there.
Yeah, so they have submitted some type of plan which we should get from the, uh, they've submitted, they've submitted a plan to the select board. So, uh, we should get that plan of like what's been submitted to the select board, but then they will also be, they presenting it to us. Uh, the town council has, uh, has had, was going to speak with the town administrator about, uh, doing a, um. A training for us on forty B hearings in general.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good idea.
So they, she had to get approval for that from, uh, you know, the, from the town administrator. But, uh, so that's a possibility that we would do that too, but, you know, we just would notice that on, on this, uh, town clerk calendar and be able to do that. Um, but yeah, so there's no action right now, but that's something that's coming. And that's like sort of the general process that she outlined for me when I talked to, I talked with the town council last, uh, last week. So there's that one, and then Linda had a couple of items that she wanted to discuss here.
Basically, I'd like to update the, um, the ZBA info on the town website. And that's not adding a lot of stuff, but it is updating the board member names and associate member names, adding those, and contact information. And I'm guessing that Dee Dee is our contact, but I wasn't sure, it was Jennifer?
Dee Dee's the contact. Um, I don't think we should put contact information in there for.
Not for us.
For us, yeah, just make sure that Dee Dee's listed on there. Um, and then in that case, just to make sure that people aren't getting, you know, multiple, uh, well, one, we don't want to violate open meeting law by all being on the same email with somebody who's talking to us. But also, um, I think just to make sure we're giving a consistent message to people that are applying, it's better to have it come through the building department. They can sort of triage it too, and sometimes there's things that someone might think need to come to the ZBA that town is able to handle on its own. So I, I think Dee Dee's the right contact person to have there, that Dee Dee can get to us as, as needed.
The other thing to put there is to publish the hearing location. The time, I mean, the time and, uh, the hearing notice goes on the web, but there's no location listed. Is that something we can do consistently? Move where we are?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could decide as a board that like we want to try to shoot through this room, but, but only problem is like sometimes this room's not going to be available. I don't know if that creates confusion if we list that this is our like meeting room and then we have to go to the senior center or something like that, but.
Yeah, because they, they have like the library and that's where my son, if you do study here.
Yeah.
Um, like have, we park the ground as well.
We maybe could, we maybe could at least put, you know, the, the relocated, I mean, I guess our hearings are going to be either here or at the senior center at this point, or on Zoom. So I guess we could, we could put multiple locations, we have our hearings at these three locations.
I think that's.
Or, or meeting at, I mean, if it's not accessible, then do Zoom?
Yeah.
As far as just to keep it consistent.
We could let people know that we meet at the library or at the senior center or on Zoom, if like, you know, I don't know.
When we post the notices, does it say when the meeting will take place?
Yeah, yeah, you have to say when the meeting will take place.
That's what's missing.
Right.
So. But she's just saying on the website, wouldn't be helpful to say like, do the other boards say that where they meet? Do they all meet in the same place consistently?
Yeah.
I think the planning board does, or date anyway, if they're used to it. It's just old school.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we could put something on there about, yeah, I think we could do that if we want to.
I mean, is, is the town hall not available anywhere, the meeting where the we used to?
It's a junk room.
Sorry? It's a junk room?
This.
Just start the storage down there.
Yeah.
Well, when you put up the.
I guess if we just say library, I mean, I just like don't know if it's going to be confusing to people, for instance, like if we say we meet at the library and then we want to do it at the senior center. Like, is that going to be confusing to someone potentially who's like, oh, my God, I'm meeting at the ZBA tonight, would be, would people maybe end up at the wrong place?
But when you post the hearing time and you have to focus, Jennifer, some, Jennifer does that, doesn't she? She posts the year.
The town clerk.
Town clerk, so the town clerk could know at that point, town where we're going to be.
The town, so the, the notice that we put off, the notice that goes out to a butters, the notice that goes in the paper, and the notice that goes to the town clerk has the, has the address of where we're meeting.
Okay. Um, so it's a question of.
But it's just whether we want to.
What's available, like where we usually meet. But the library's closed as well right now, like we're in your kind of, like this door's open, but that end door is open, that could be confusing as well for people.
But I, but I, but I think it'd be okay to say that we meet at the, you know, the library or the.
If we meet at the senior center on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it opens at seven, we could meet a little bit earlier. And be within the, um, open period. And not have any problems, people would just be able to come in now.
Right, and then even if we walked in and left.
Which is what all the other boards do.
Right.
And especially like you said, if we're going to have more, um, higher profile stuff coming up, like more people will be in attendance, so it is important that we. Someone recommended this room to me versus the senior, senior center, at least they liked this room better.
This is a lovely room, but like again, is it, is it available?
Yeah.
All the time?
We could probably book a senior center room, please.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's not like it, you know, there's anything much going on very usually like at the senior center.
They have a classroom, it's open, there's a big, a big dining area, there's a couple of other rooms.
That's where the con con meets in there, right, in the, uh, the.
Con con meets in there, I convinced them to meet in the classroom. Because it's a smaller, better, better sounding room.
Is the planning board still on Zoom?
No.
If they were meeting, they were meeting in town hall.
Oh, maybe, I don't.
Nope.
They're not.
Nope.
But they're still listed as meeting in town hall and all that, so.
But the select board, I think, is still on Zoom.
Nope. They're hybrid, so they meet in the senior center in that social hall and they do hybrid on Zoom.
Mm-hmm.
Believe me, I'm going to want them to use the, to assess this up.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, they do the.
Um, so I guess, well, I think we can think about that one.
Yeah, I think, I think the first step would be just see like how booked up this room is and whether it would be an inconvenience to say that we need it on that Monday, just because our department is in there.
I just think we should at some point do it.
Yes.
Make sure the location is on the website with the hearing date.
That's on, that's on, that is, that is the other.
Right, that's why, it just means adding a location to it.
Yeah. But even like, I went to the ZBA website today just to see and there was nothing listed on the schedule for today on the calendar.
No, they don't, I know, they don't do that though, they, it just goes on the town clerk's.
I found it listed, but it's in the meetings.
Who's the webmaster?
The webmaster?
Yeah. Like who, who runs the website?
Jennifer, isn't it?
Jennifer is the main person for website, but I believe other people have access to website. Like I have, I have access to have the media part of.
Right.
Our webpage, but someone might have access to the town clerk part of it. But I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, whoever's watching this, Jennifer is the contact for it.
I did see this meeting listed on website.
On town hall.
Yeah.
Yeah. I went to see you, where's that, there's a calendar and.
Oh, yeah, it's not there, we need to put it there.
Why don't we do that?
I don't know.
Through Jennifer. I mean, I can talk with Jennifer, why don't you help me do that?
Okay, yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Because maybe, I don't know, if we could get access to it or, I don't know.
Once, once you figure out location, I'll figure out how to get it, how's that?
Okay.
Um, I have one other thing, um. The website on the ZBA page allows us to put some explanation at the top. And most of the other boards do, planning board doesn't, but all the other boards have some information about the, what the board does and how it operates. And I was thinking we could put some wording there and I threw out some suggestions. That might help people and maybe not, but it's not something we have to decide tonight, we can do one or two or not any. But it's an opportunity to put something there so people know what the ZBA does and doesn't do. And I was, one I think we've talked about a lot here is item four. The ZBA adheres to NAS state conflict of interest regulations and does not conduct discussions in cases outside of actual hearings. So people don't, you know, ask us to do findings before we meet. That was one. Um, incomplete or inaccurate applications face postponement rejection, that was another. Those two have also hearings are scheduled two weeks after public postings. If any of these you think would be helpful there? Or none, but you know, I propose that you think about it. Maybe get back to me with some ideas?
Yep.
Or something else that I didn't list?
I mean, I would even say just a small bulleted, perhaps glossary of terms, just so people understand the difference between variance and finding and.
Well, that's good, yeah.
And then, uh, we should check with Dee Dee on the, um, I don't, I don't have a current list, like a paper list of the, uh, all the staff, of the bylaw. Well, I think we're supposed to have one, but.
What was that?
The, the paper bylaw, I don't, I don't have one.
I don't either, I have had to print out sections and it's really annoying to try to have to push each page.
Yeah.
What did this feel like, you didn't make that yourself?
It should be in the binder.
Yeah.
So with the.
These are actually the old ones, these are, these are the old, the, the number has changed.
Yeah, everything, there's, and there's a lot of.
Somebody made this, I mean, I put it in binder, someone gave me these papers when I, when they joined the board.
Right.
John, John handed out a partial and then I updated it later, but what happens is that you get all these new, the new updated bylaws that the town votes on.
Mm-hmm.
And their insertion without.
Right.
Their page numbers, and it's really hard to, it'd be nice to have a binder, just like Andrews, with the.
And you could put in the, you know, the modifications or what have you.
Yeah, and it's really hard to, to have a, I mean, to sit in a meeting and go buy, you know, online, have your computer online and try to look back and look at each one on.
Do you, uh, do you want to take that one and ask Dee Dee or the clerk?
Oh, ask the clerk. For free coffee. I think it just makes things a lot easier when we're sitting here, because we all got three computers trying to look up the bylaws.
Great, I think that'd be nice to have. And then they do give us like, like I get the updates in the mailbox, but I don't even have anything to add the update to.
Right.
Exactly, well, speaking of updates, do you want us to be checking for ourselves or are you going to distribute that stuff?
Yeah, I'll distribute that stuff. We're not, we don't get much in there.
Mm-hmm.
It's, occasionally we copy on things and then we get the applications.
And site visits was my other thing.
Yeah, I mean, we can do site visits anytime, I mean, I don't think that has to be up to me. If, if like there, we have a hearing and people want to visit the site, I think we can just talk about it on that, that day. I think we should open the hearing, I mean, we have to open the hearing because you have to get permission from the person that visits the site.
It's handled.
So we have to, so we'll have to open the hearing and then you, you have to publicly say they're going to the site because it's like a meeting to go there.
Mm-hmm.
You have to have all three of us ready to go at the same time.
Which that you can conduct the meeting onsite as well, if you let people know.
Yeah, we talked, I talked with like the town administrator about this and she was like, don't be bashful about like not making decisions that night.
Mm-hmm.
If you want to take more time on things. So I think that could just be up to anybody if people aren't familiar with, if, I mean, I think a lot of times we're familiar with like the area that.
Right.
But, um, if we want to go look at stuff, I, I think we can just decide that together.
So, so we can go individually without any meeting, but if you decide that we should go together, we can.
Oh, yeah, so we could do that, but, yeah, so even if one person says I think they visit the site before we make a decision, I guess we can get permission at the meeting from that person. Or if you want to do a drive-by.
Does it?
Yeah, you could say, I want to, let's post one of this, so we have a chance to drive by, yeah, we can do that too.
Okay.
And obviously you drive by before, one person can drive by before the hearing, it's just like, we don't have permission to go on the property if you want to, if somebody has a deck in their backyard or something. We don't, we don't have, we don't have permission to go like on the property until we. That would be, that could be helpful.
Yeah, there's some of these on occasion and it would have been very helpful to maybe say, okay, we just, we're going to have to go look at the property and come back and decide.
Yeah. Is that it for now?
Well, I can.
All right, we will, uh, adjourn the hearing.
As a move.
Thank you, second.
All right.
Aye.